As Cook Forest and Officer, do you have any comments you would like to share with us in this conference?
During our flip into the record, neighbor letters are submitted to the planning commissioner for this evening. We have letters from Rivermark on March 17th, a letter from Valerie Shayk dated 3/13, consisted of general comments on the position of the stormwater and too many people in traffic in our core district. Need to preserve what we have in our South Park or we will lose appeal in the future and it will create a snowball. We also received a letter from Jason Sobek received on March 15th. His concerns were increased cost of township and residents for future maintenance if rezoning was new for. We also received a letter from Ann Euler on March 16th revised on the 17th. Her concerns were noise, public wildlife, and wanted South Park to do its own studies and not rely on developers that would clearly show in their favor. We received an email from Carolyn Blythe on March 17th that cited the lack of proximity of shopping or community services in arterial collector road fire that are not being met by definition and ordinance. Today, you were all hand delivered additional letters and an email that was received today. We received a second letter from Ann Euler concerning the increased speed of traffic and the problem of light pollution along with diminishing space for animals. We also received a letter from Julia Dunn concerning stormwater flooding concerns and master treatment. Additional email from Ann Euler received today, comments from the online petition. All these were made available to the members prior to 7:00 PM started this evening and I just wanted to make that part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. So ladies and gentlemen, just a reminder of some that we'd like to try to follow. Please come forward, sign in, state your name, state your address so that it can be recorded properly and so that staff can properly document the information. Please respect everyone. If somebody has something that is, that they're stating that is a little bit different than your opinion, please limit redundant comments. If we hear stormwater management and more people have stormwater management questions or comments, let's, we can try to limit those. And we do want to try to limit comments to three minutes. I realize that there is, people have put forth a lot of effort and time to put together a presentation for us, so. Do we, Mr. Seigle, can you...
Is there a big thing along? Could we just have that submitted to the presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Two minutes for while you're signing in for one of our members.
I know what you're saying. I thought it was a roast and something good. It was ready. It was hot. It was a little bit of a...
Tim Foster, Tavon Material, Corset, West Chester. And I would like to present, this is a group that collected 320 signatures for signing in person. The only comment, I will make for these, you can see, I've been collecting just over 100 of these and I, we've done this from time to time. I have never had the occasion for every person that I asked, every house that I asked to sign this, to sign it in opposition of the rezoning.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Jason Sobek, 1750 Stoltz Road. We just wanted to present you with a copy of the online change dot work position as of approximately 11:00 AM today. There were 3,233 signatures. Many people that formerly lived in South Park or the surrounding neighborhoods signed, but these 383 of those signatures are in South Park zip codes 1509 to 15236. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible, but I just think there's some important matters that the township and the board certainly has to be aware of. Now, I'm an attorney. I worked for Consol Energy for 12 years and I think a point that was just laced over very quickly, most unfortunately by the developer, was the fact of the, of the mine subsidence issue. And I know there's a lot of confusion, you know, in, in my days at Consol, I saw a lot of legal summaries of mines subsidence, issues, costs, you know, repairs, all the things. So, in, in the, in the report by ACA Engineering, and this is a group that Red Rocks Group hired, and I'm sure you've seen this, but it says the risk of mines subsidence for the portion adjacent, the site adjacent to Sleepy Hollow Road is high based on a scale of low, medium to high. Now, I hope this jumps out at everybody because, and I just give a little bit of background, there's just some confusion on this. Mines subsidence, you know, Consol Energy has been around since 1860, very innovative, successful company, operates the largest underground coal mine in North America they have for a long time. The Bailey Mine Complex in Washington in Green County does 25 million tons of coal a year. And so, there's obviously a lot of issues, but what, what Consol does in those type of mines is a longwall mining machine. I've been underground a number of times and what that machine does, and it's a high-tech, laser-driven machine, very few men, it has its own roof support, so as it mines the coal and it can get nearly all of the coal out of the scene, there's instantaneous subsidence behind it. So that roof falls immediately, so the company knows exactly where they're mining that day, so immediately in real time, the company can, you know, address those issues. Now, we have a huge difference. I worked with the DEP the, the last couple of weeks and I just wanted to share the most detailed maps that they had of the area, and I'm just going to submit these. But, but what you'll see with those mines, and it's obviously, it's a very heavily mined area, the Sleepy Hollow, South Park area, they, they were done room and pillar. Now, I've, I've seen, I've seen some of these mines and if you can understand, they were mining coal and they were leaving pillars of rock and coal. The, the problem with those types of mines is decades or even now 100 years later, you can get this regular, you know, loosening of those and you're going to get subsidence at the top. What can contribute to that is vibration, roads, construction, building above that can, you know, can, can produce that subsidence pretty, you know, pretty quickly and at that time. So, I, I noticed that, you know, when we walk quite a bit on Sleepy Hollow Road, we walk our, ride bikes, drive back to get to the trails, while they were working on that academy building, that's the 2200 Sleepy Hollow Road, it had those crane trucks and heavy equipment back there, that road after those trucks were on that road, you could see the, the deterioration of that road. And what it's called, it's called pothole subsidence. And I, I just wanted to share some of these pictures with you if you haven't seen it. These are pretty substantial, pretty substantial piece of evidence of that, of that type of subsidence. Yeah, and I, I also, I also have a report about that subsidence also, so you can see that. So I think what we're all, we're already seeing, just with that type of process to, to repair and replace that bridge, we're already seeing this type of subsidence. So I think the township has really got to take a look at that and say, is this, is this really appropriate to do any type of redevelopment of that road in, in all of the traffic?
That's on the agenda. The agenda is on rezoning.
That's what, that's what I'm, I'm addressing.
You're talking about development. We're not talking about...
I'm, I'm talking to transition to R4, additional traffic.
I'm sorry? What you're talking about is not really the topic of the meeting. Meeting is not the issue.
Everything talks about that.
Yeah, exactly.
Are you just preparing what the R2, the increased...
I'm, I'm just trying to come out. Let me, let me summarize this, because I, I think, I think the additional concern that we should have, I think we have as residents and wish to have the township, is, is the language as unsensational reporting. Because it is our understanding that test reports are being requested to further evaluate the mining condition of the site and the quality of the overburdened lot. Well, ACIA agrees that further evaluation may be necessary. We would recommend that evaluation occurs during the land development process instead of the rezoning application. Now, what they're asking me to do in, in the business, the reason is, is for the sure economics, is to reduce the cost of the project. They're asking you to make a decision whether this property, it can, can even sustain that type of development, that type of high density without even getting core samples. So where, where does that responsibility lie? Whose responsibility does it to, does it to make sure that that is not going to be an issue? Because if you see...
Your points are well taken, and, but I think they're for another type of meeting. We're strictly trying to determine whether we're going to approve an R2 to R4 or not. What you're, what you're discussing is very important, but not to this part of the decision. I mean, it would be disrespectful because it's a lot of good information, but it's all about whether it's R2 or R4.
Why, why was this submitted to you?
It was meant to, for the idea of, do we want to rezone it from R2 to R4?
Why?
That was, that's, that's the major purpose of the session. That's what this gentleman is trying to say to you. And we understand, look, it's important, you all have important data, but remember, our decision is focused on whether we are going to approve or not approve a renovation to go from R2 to R4. All of that, it's already zoned as R2. So, that kind of discussion talks about whether you're doing a development. We're not to that point. We're not to that point. I'm just trying to try and figure whether it would be re-zoned from R2 to R4. I don't mean to be mean or disrespectful, but that conversation is more pertinent than when the development would occur, if it would occur.
I will speak. I just, I just... Because if you look at the language of this report that was submitted, this, this statement is a repeat, warranty is expressed or denied. So they're completely walking away from this. This is, this is going to lead to, to the, to the township taking on these responsibilities. And I, I just, I'm going to make one last point, okay? Because normally you can sue a city or a town because of some immunity, but when you can, right, and this, and this goes right to the point, because when you can sue is when you have a duty, right, a duty of care to somebody who is injured. So any type of development on this road, any type of change in this road, any type of increase of the size of the traffic on this road, you do have a duty of care. So it's, the duty is to ensure there are no dangerous conditions in public places such as roads, parks, schools. So this goes directly to that. So this is where South Park Township, we've all read the, the jury awards that are tens of millions of dollars, right? This is where South Park can overstep their, their bounds, approve any type of development in this area, and, and to delay any type of bore samples and, and, you know, in, in this process and serve it till later, that serves the township no purpose. And I hope you realize that. That serves the developer's purpose, not our purpose as, as residents.
I'm trying to say focus on this decision of either go from R2 to R4 or not go from R2.
I'm hoping everything I presented clearly demonstrates why we should not ever consider R4, and then we'll get to the point later on whether to...
My name is Julia Dunn, G U N. There's a meeting going on, please shut up. 1840 Stoltz Road in South Park. In our neighborhood, Stoltz Road, and you should have a flyer on this for me, I think you can add it out to you. We are requesting you vote no to a zoning change from R1 and 2 to R4 for the 59 acre Sleepy Hollow Road. Residents and business owners located in that area have many concerns on the issue of school owner management. Well, first of all, the question belies itself, will the area be totally deforested for an R4 versus an R2? Will there be less impervious surfaces with an R2 versus an R4? Less parking spaces with an R2 versus an R4? So, there's a lot of questions that we have in the neighborhood because if you go back to 2018, everybody on Sleepy Hollow Run got flooded. You know, that creek is the recipient of all the waters on Stoltz Road, all the Bethel Park properties on Stoltz Road, the Saddle Brook plan on Stoltz Road, all dumped into Sleepy Hollow Run. Sleepy Hollow Run needs some work. It needs some stream stabilization. The sewer line for South Park runs right through Sleepy Hollow Run. Below the 59 acres, subject of tonight, the Bethel Park sewer blew up in 2018. That had to be replaced, a road had to be brought down to the stream to actually repair that side. And my question is, I just found out Bethel Park sewers run on one side of Stoltz Road, South Park sewer runs through the stream through Sleepy Hollow Run. Where do they meet? Do they meet down below this parcel? Will they have to dig under the sewer, Bethel Park sewer to get to Saddle? I mean, I don't know. I've asked the question, nobody seems to know. So, and I listed on this paper all the damages that the neighborhood suffered in 2018. Below the stream was a $500,000 bridge that Alliant County had to replace. The horse arena above me flooded, Dawn Dick, the business building beside me, the trees are all falling because of stormwater. It's higher than my head, it's over 15 feet. It's a river behind my barn when we get heavy rains. A new home and Saddle Brook plan sliding off the hill, all the construction eagles were there. There's a lot of water in this area. And, and the Maripath plan, it's at the intersection of Maripath and Stoltz, was built before stormwater management. All of that water from Maripath, from Patricia, from Edwards, goes down Maripath to my property into Sleepy Hollow Run. There's no other, there's supposed to be a diversion channel behind Patricia, but that, I guess is overgrown. So all that water runs basically through Dawn Dick's property and my property back to the creek. So, what I'm saying is if you put an R4 high-density development back there, all the impervious surfaces, all the water running off it, it's all going to the same creek. And the water's just not going to flow to the left, it's going to sit there swirl around and slow all the water that's coming down Sleepy Hollow. Every, every heavy rain, Sleepy Hollow and McCauley flood, that intersection. Every rain, Sleepy Hollow and Stoltz flood, right there at the same intersection. You only have one road out of this proposed development. What happens when that floods? And the other question, why isn't there another access road to this development? Shouldn't there be another way out for these people? I mean, what is the number you have to get to to have another access road? One more question begs itself, the bridge, the road will have to be widened, so the bridge on Sleepy Hollow will have to be widened. Where's the temporary bridge going to go? How will the people that live on Sleepy Hollow get out while this is happening? Period. So, so those are some of my comments. The other thing I, I hope we all keep in mind is that Bethel Park is building a new elementary center just over the hill behind Saddle Brook. 25 acres of land is being forested there. Is that water going to go downhill this way or downhill that way? I don't know, but I'm at the bottom. So, so that's, that's my concern and the comprehensive plan must have taken this in consideration in 2018. So in designating this area R1 and R2, I think that was probably part of the rationale, and I hope that you adhere to that plan and keep it as long as possible.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Summer Olive, this is Kyle Olive and Elliot Olive. We're at 3572 Falmouth Drive in South Park. I'm not going to say a whole lot, my girl's prepared something to say. I know you guys commented somehow about development, about rezoning. Rezoning opens the door for the development we're talking about. I want to say he spoke about affordable housing, like putting townhouses in. I, I don't consider like the townhouses at Southern Station, I don't consider that affordable housing. There's affordable housing in South Park. I kind of work on those townhomes. I have a beautiful house in South Park. And also you were talking about the Buffalo and history of the Buffalo. Yes, the area has built up and the Buffalo are still there, but there has not been development across the street from the Buffalo. They are a major part of South Park. My daughter busted her butt reforming, trying to make improvements of South Park Game Reserve, and I just asked that if we're going to talk about the Buffalo, we take time to visit the South Park Game Reserve and see how the Buffalo will live, see the babysitter born every year, and, and really take in South Park Game Reserve. But, I'm going to hand it over to my daughters because they speak better than I do.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kyle Olive. I'm nine years old and I, and I am a third grader at South Park Elementary School. I've lived in South Park for a whole life. I want to start getting educated with a quote from one of my favorite movies, The Lorax. I speak for the trees, for the trees have their jobs. My thought about this decision to cut down the trees for houses is that they shouldn't cut them down. Animals need jobs too. They also need food. If they don't have the legs from home, they'll be in the streets and in people's backyards. Some people might not like having animals in their yards. Also, having animals in their street will make accidents happen. People could be hurt and animals will lose their lives. Also, trees are beautiful and they do good things for the ecosystem, so why cut them down? When I'm older, I don't want to grow out with no trees. If we keep cutting down trees in South Park, what's next? All the trees in South Park? All the trees in Pittsburgh? All the trees in the state? Please don't just think about right now. Think about the future for me, my friends, and our whole community, again from The Lorax. Unless someone would like to be there a whole afterlife, nothing is going to get better. It's not. Thank you for listening to 200 to 100. Please keep the juice.
Hello, everyone. My name is Elliot Olive. I'm 18 years old and I'm a senior at South Park High School. Please note that what I've prepared to say tonight are my own thoughts and feelings regarding this matter. I'm not here representing my mother, but representing myself. Once I heard about the development proposed for Sleepy Hollow, I knew that I wanted to speak. One of the things I love about South Park is all of the wildlife and interesting spots in the community. Sesley Drive, for example, is one of my favorite spots in the park. As a teenager, that's where I liked to spend my time running, watching sunsets, and eating with my friends, and so on. That stretch of land alone holds so many specific memories for me just from the past few years. All of the time I've been in high school, I've gone up and spent countless hours in that part of the park. I believe that putting these townhouses here destroys a significant and beautiful part of our township. At what point do we as a community draw the line with the amount of nature we destroy? Honestly, it seems as though there's a new housing development popping up every month, and I've heard firsthand that many have had structural issues and even been deemed unfit for living. To put it plainly, we're taking more and more physical park out of South Park every day. This continuous changing of my community, which I've lived, lived in since I was a baby, makes me not want to come back after I graduate from college. Am I not a future resident here, expressing my opinion? I believe that our community's biggest definable trait is the wildlife and greenery, so what are we anymore if we continue to tear down and destroy? I could say a lot more about all of the points I've made tonight, but I know our time is limited. Please don't take my brevity as a lack of passion. Thank you for your time and consideration, and please, let's speak the park in South Park.
I'm Walt Conellman, 180, I'm against rezoning of the property located primarily between Sleepy Hollow Road and the game reserve section of South Park from R2 to R4. This undeveloped parcel supports a mature forest, habitat for wildlife, and serves as a natural buffer to the park for potential outdoor recreation. Records show this property conveyed to VECA Land Development on... with my friends, and so on. That stretch of land alone holds so many specific memories for me just from the past few years. All the time I've been in high school, I've gone up and spent countless hours in that part of the park. I believe that putting these townhouses here destroys a significant and beautiful part of our township. At what point do we as a community draw the line with the amount of nature we destroy? Honestly, it seems as though there's a new housing development popping up every month, and I've heard firsthand that many have had structural issues and even been deemed unfit for living. To put it plainly, we're taking more and more physical park out of South Park every day. This continuous changing of my community, which I've lived in since I was a baby, makes me not want to come back after I graduate from college. Am I not a future resident here, expressing my opinion? I believe that our community's biggest definable trait is the wildlife and greenery, so what are we anymore if we continue to tear down and destroy? I could say a lot more about all of the points I've made tonight, but I know our time is limited. Please don't take my brevity as a lack of passion. Thank you for your time and consideration, and please, let's speak the park in South Park.
I'm Walt Conellins at 180 Stoltz Road. I'm against rezoning of the property located primarily between Sleepy Hollow Road and the game reserve section of South Park from R2 to R4. This undeveloped parcel supports a mature forest, habitat for wildlife, and serves as a natural buffer to the park for potential outdoor recreation. Records show this property conveyed to VECA Land Development on August 1979 for $375,000. At that time and to now, it's been R2. A compelling reason to change that zoning might be for some larger benefit to the community, but let's think, what would that be? Taking away the park-like environment that many of us moved here to enjoy is not a benefit. Raising taxes to pay for expansion of roads, schools, and required utilities to handle the increase in population is not a benefit. Displacing wildlife so that they have nowhere to go, such that we have to hire hunters in our communities to cull the deer herd, is not a benefit. The financial gain of the seller and the developer are not justifications. If the owners or developers want to develop this parcel of wooded land, then develop it as it is currently zoned. If that's not profitable, there are other options, such as to sell it to an organization that will keep it as a green space, for example, the Albigame Land Trust. Such a sale could yield three to four times the original purchase price of this property and maintain the property in the way it has been for many years. I think that would be a win-win for all involved. In any case, please leave this property zone to R2.
My name is Valerie Shaker, and I'm a lifelong resident of South Park Township. My parents moved here with my sister-in-law back in 1971 when I was five years old, and I grew up in the house that I now own. I purchased it from my parents when my father passed away. I graduated from South Park Township High School in 1983, Go Eagles! And like everybody behind me, I'm a proud resident of this community. We're very proud of the community that we live in. I, I sent a letter about my feelings to all of you. I thank you for your time in reading that and not rehash it tonight, but I did have a few more comments I wanted to make about the traffic because at the time I read, wrote that letter to all of you, I really wasn't thinking about the, the new, um, school development over Armstrong Way by, which the traffic is going to spill onto King School Road and Stoltz Road. And, you know, we don't have a lot of traffic signaling and signage on Stoltz right now. We're Sleepy Hollow, it's a single-lane road. With the amount of people that are going to be spilling out there with the, the type of R4 development, if that zoning goes through, it means, according to Ms. Jaigle's very detailed report, almost 1,000 people and over 600 automobiles into that little Sleepy Hollow corner. So, you know, our taxes are definitely going to be increased to pay for widening the road, installing traffic signaling and signage. In addition, once that, all of those people commuting back and forth from work, and then we have the new elementary school coming in, you know, we're going to have a lot of traffic, cars idling, a lot of exhaust in the air. And it's a very similar situation to what you have now on Byal's Cafe and Brentwood Bank where rush hour every day when St. Louis de Merelac was out, there's a single lane of cars that goes all the way from the traffic light in front of Byal's, all the way down to Johnston Road, past St. Louis de Merelac, and then down to 19. And it's just a single lane of cars. And our children do get out of school before rush hour is over. There's not one sidewalk available in any of our neighborhoods, and the kids are going to be out walking around trying to visit their friends in the neighborhood, and it's just not going to be safe with the increased traffic. So, you know, we, we don't want that. You know, at the end of the day, I estimated with the US Census information in my letter to all of you, that there would be about four times the amount of people concentrated in the area. With Ms. Jaigle's very detailed report, she came to the conclusion that there would be five times the amount of people in that area. So, I, I, I just want to again reiterate that, you know, I understand that the, the landowner is a real estate developer, but so is everyone behind me. Everyone behind me is a real estate investor. We've all invested in South Park, we love it here, we care, that's why we're here. And we ask that you please consider, before you vote, that you vote no to the rezoning because it will negatively impact our real estate investments as homeowners, the quality of our life, the air quality in the area, the aesthetic of our neighborhoods, the traffic congestion that we'll have to deal with, the population density in our neighborhoods, and that you vote no to rezoning Sleepy Hollow.
Michelle Green, 1908 Stoltz Road. And I apologize if this is a little scattered, I was not prepared to give any remarks today. For those that do not know where my exact location is, I'm almost directly across from the entrance of Sleepy Hollow. To further elaborate on some of the points that have already been spoken, in 2018, when Sleepy Hollow did flood, I could not leave my house for 30 days. Traffic was frequently turning around in my driveway, which is a really great surprise for me, immediately returning from my honeymoon. So, that was really great. In addition to that, I was a first-time home buyer in 2015, whenever we decided to purchase in South Park. We chose South Park for a reason, over Mount Lebanon or Buffalo Park or the surrounding areas. South Park is a great community to start a family, and which we have recently been able to do. My son will be two in two weeks. That being said, since we've moved to Stoltz Road, we have seen traffic increase exponentially already. In addition to the Summit Station, a lot of traffic reroutes to Stoltz to avoid traffic flooding, as I'm sure some of you might know. My son will be two, and I will not let him get out of the car in the driveway. He cannot play in my front yard currently because of the traffic. When it is evening time, as others have noted, there are no stop signs, there are not even street lamps near my house. And in addition to that, the infrastructure with the bridge, I have a dog, we utilize Sleepy Hollow quite often, the bridge is crumbling. So, that is definitely something to take into consideration in the addition of high volume of traffic. Unfortunately, I think in a situation like this, with the target of the demographics for developers, you know, I would not have chosen the location of my home. I'm a young professional. If I was looking to reside in South Park, the average rent costs are higher than my mortgage. I have a, I have a four-bedroom lovely home in this area. And if I were a young professional looking to move to a great neighborhood that allows more green space than the surrounding neighborhoods, a good school district, more one-on-one student activity and teacher ratio, I would not be living in an apartment, or in a condo, or in a townhome where it would further limit the availability that I would have. We moved to South Park for a reason, and it's so we could have that balance between city accessibility and the wonderful green space that this neighborhood has to offer. So, as a young professional in the target demographic that the developer is targeting, I would highly encourage you to reconsider Zone 2 to Zone 4. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Allison Foster. I live at 1912 Stoltz Road. Right next door to Michelle, as she said, we get flooding right before the bridge. That happens with not even a heavy rainfall. So, I can't imagine if we lost more trees due to that, that that wouldn't get even worse. I've lived there since 2001. I know the road, I know the creek, I've seen how the creek keeps rising. I also want to point out, we love our horses and our stables. We like seeing the horses walk up and down the street, even the doggies when we hear them. It's something that would completely change if we get so developed back there. Where are the horses going to walk when they take that short little jaunt just to go down Sleepy Hollow? We've also had a lot of construction in South Park over the past years, with Summit, with Riggs Road, Riggs Road. It's a lot of new construction happening at once in our little township. I don't think we need to be rezoned from 2 to 4. I ask you to consider that. Thank you.
My name's Ed Eicheloff, and I live at 5500 King School Road in Bethel Park. And I am going to ask you to just seriously look at what lies ahead. To keep this zoned R2 versus R4, primarily because of just the volume of traffic, which affects the residents of Stoltz and King School, especially with the proposed new elementary school that is going to be my new neighbor across the street. That is going to add a tremendous amount of traffic. For 22 years since I've lived there, I've fought to try and get a secondary stop sign at Stoltz and King School to slow traffic. You know, there's nothing better than the, the summer events when all the guys pour out at South Park and do that quarter-mile drag strip up Stoltz Road. And I can't imagine if we had more vehicles because of a large dwel-, or a large complex down there on Sleepy Hollow. Now, Red Rock has pretty well stated that they're looking at this as a cash cow. They want something there to get a maximum benefit, maximum income, so that they can change this zoning to justify that. I'm saying, please reconsider and keep this R2 versus R4, just because of what lies ahead and how complex this is going to become with the new elementary school that's already happened. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say anything about the fact that it lives a few houses away from the woman who used to star with Maxwell Smart in Get Smart? Jim, how you doing, sir?
My name is Andy Gashmeyer. I live at 962 West Chester Road. And if I might take a personal moment, it's nice to say after 40 years in television news, that I can talk now without being concerned about straddling objectivity and commentary. But I will say, you know, you are trying to put 10 pounds of sand in a 5-pound bed. At least that's what the developer from Philadelphia is proposing. Jim Lachoff, an old family friend and a builder, can probably add to that in terms of what he can say about some of these building plans and the kind of imposition that they will ultimately create.
And Ms. Jaigle, is it?
You have my utter sympathy. You had to make a presentation based on statistics. My, my, last year of, of college, I had to take six hours of math or statistics in one semester. And I know how boring that can be. No reference to you. Your hands were tied making your presentation. I was out there in the back, and I know people were getting antsy. My recommendation to you guys... Has already, uh, Jim, or has already, Tim, has already made the comments about the impact, so I'm not going to bother with that. But this is a big deal. I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but what you have to do is change the venue. This is a terrible setting for something as Angus did. Nothing in the way of political conference, and worse in terms of the presentation we are trying to make, the acoustics are just terrible. And I'm, I'm a guy with one ear done. The other people in the back who have two working pretty well, I suspect, were having just as difficult a time hearing things. I think next time you ought to go for the auditorium at the high school. For the evil captain, you have to change the background. Ms. Jaigle can have visual aids to demonstrate her point, which she would be called upon to testify before that particular group. One of the things that's missing in this, in her presentation, is the relevance. I stood back there and I'm trying to figure out, where the hell is this in relationship to the Montour Trail, which I hit probably two or three times a week between planning? And that, that part of Montour Trail comes right up against the tennis courts. I can't visualize how close this development is to the tennis courts, to where the Montour Trail ends there, that section you go into off of Stewart Road, and how close it comes up behind those tennis courts. People are, are hearing numbers, but they're not seeing what they're up against. And, and talk about the Montour Trail. This is really is a quality of life issue. There's all kinds of wildlife in Montour Trail. Don't tell me that will not be affected. I grew up 85 miles north of New York City, on, on the northern reach of the Delaware River. I still go back there to go canoe and kayak. When that area became a part of the National Park Service and they preserved a beautiful area, we had more and more people coming up from New York City than we could handle in one weekend. You can't get on a river on Saturday, Sunday, or Monday of any week during the summertime. I have no idea. And neither do most of these people here have any idea how this is going to impact an already busy area in terms of how many additional people are going to be using what is a treasure out there, and that's the wooded area alongside of the Montour Trail. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Dunn. I'm a former resident of South Park. I currently live in Pleasantville, 469 Toner Road. I come to South Park or to South Park Township almost every day. One of the things that I've noticed that we're talking about is stormwater management. But also, how is that sewage going to be treated, that small sewage down there on High Court Road? And also, all the other developments that are going on. There's a huge drainage development on Hill Hall Road that, that water, that stormwater, all that sewage has to be treated and getting down to Claritin. The same with the new town, the work at, I think it's the Scormazzy or Scormazzy Development Back, all drains down there. That sewage has to be treated. The same with the Summit Station. And along with that is the, we live in this area, it's the Montour Trail. Mark it South Park, you can connect to the trail with this and that. That's going to get fucked with all this stormwater in all these communities and developments. My suggestion, just the sewage issue, is both, uh, to use R2 and leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lysica. I live at 2680 Brownsville Road. Mine is just more on a personal note regarding the change for the zoning. Okay? As many statements have already previously been stated here this evening, I would just like to reiterate a few and expand on my opinion regarding the proposed rezoning request. My family has been lifelong residents of South Park when it truly was a park-like setting. That is one of the reasons why my great-grandparents purchased the land for their family's farming. I was born at South Park and have been a resident to this day. I have seen what development does to the areas surrounding my home. While growing up, it was woods to pick berries, take a leisurely walk to see the animals. But when construction of homes took place behind ours, those woods were gone, and they were now gone forever. The additional water runoff that came from construction onto my ground caused numerous floods over the course of the years due to the deforestation that has gone through. When you turn ground and trees into blacktop, the water has nowhere to go except for the neighboring area. The property in question is currently zoned R2. A reason that could be considered a positive to change would be, okay, we're going to expand our population, let South Park grow. But unfortunately, that change would really not have a long-term benefit to us. Items to consider, obviously, as they have all been previously stated, we know about the traffic, we know about the schools, we know about the increasement of the maintenance and the cost that's going to be involved with the maintenance piece. But some of those items, they don't really compare to also the effect on climate change and the, on the CO2 rates that will be coming down into our community. We do not want to be compactor, and we do not want to have those CO2 rates be increased. I previously worked for the Department of Energy. I'm very well-versed in carbon capture, carbon sequestration, new energy development, use of our electric vehicles. So, I look at this from how it's going to be impacting our neighborhood and then also enticing those individuals to come into the community. enticing those individuals to come into the community. When they see that we're comparing to Claretton and we're gonna have a poor air quality day because a concentrated area where we are now removing any of the forestation that can adapt and take advantage of the CO2, it's not going to look good for us. I understand, obviously, the developer, they want to make a profit on the purchase of the land over the expenses that they're going to need in order to go forward with construction. I understand we're all wanna make money in this world, okay? But we also need to take into consideration the residents and the rezoning that will take place. If the developer wants to continue with housing, I strongly feel that enough homes could be put in to both increase our revenue, as in R2. There, I do not see the additional revenue coming in compared to the additional cost that it's going to cost the residents in order to perform the maintenance and the upkeep as we go forward. Additionally, as it was previously stated, if the developer, sorry, doesn't feel that going forward, that he's not gonna make enough money or the profit versus the revenue from the expenses would be appropriate, obviously, you can go to one of the conservation organizations. Some of the things that we have worked with in the past on the federal side is that there are so many grants available through the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Forestry in order to keep it as a conservative amount of space to promote the forestry, to increase the effects of the climate change and the carbon dioxide rates going forward. So, in summation, I would just leave the current R2 zoning as it is with the limited amount to individuals in a monotone way. So, thank you so much for your persistence and getting through with the information due. And I take your consideration of changing from an R2 to an R4, both for our residents and also for our neighbors and enticing the new population coming into South Park Township. Thank you again.
Hello, I am Sally S. I live at 6947 Hilldale Drive. I am also the chair of the South Park Township. I did send a letter to you guys. I think you didn't see a copy of it, but I just had to read it a little bit. This is the Allegheny County Master Plan. It was done in January of 2002. The comprehensive master plan lists the Sleepy Hollow area as a biological zone. It's stated, and I quote, "Sleepy Hollow is the largest and most intact area in South Park from a natural resource standpoint. Most of the woodland in this area are in various stages of succession, resulting from the growing of past agricultural and cultural practices." The report also goes on, the master plan, master plan was redone in 2012. Again, Sleepy Hollow was dated, they did make a request that the Sleepy Hollow Biological Zone be required, be designated as an open space preserve. In 2017, Allegheny, Western Pennsylvania Conservancy did a report for South Park. It was an ecological report. Sleepy Hollow is mentioned sixteen times in this report, sixteen times. The most, here's a quote from, it says, "The most ecologically intact portions of the park are centered around the largest blocks of forest that predate the formation of the park. The area is centered around Sleepy Hollow." It goes on to say, "The forest communities on the floodplain of Sleepy Hollow and the nearby slopes are some of the most diverse and intact found within the park." Finally, the report also lists several populations of plant species that are rare in our state and our region, and they describe the wetlands that are located in Sleepy Hollow, all of which extend to the fifty-nine acres that are being located on the park. The South Park Township Comprehensive Plan that was passed in 2017 has as its number-one goal, number-one goal, to balance development with conservation to maintain the appeal and quality of the community's existing landscapes. I believe that the group that you have spoken tonight will reflect that the community still believes this. This, if you remember, the comprehensive plan was done, it was a significant improvement from the people in the township. Also, as you know, I'm sure, the township has previously requested ten acres of ground from South Park, our county park, to help with stormwater management for another development. One of our concerns is, how much stronger are you gonna ask from South Park? If we do this development, are we gonna need more ground taken from South Park, our county park, to manage the stormwater in this development? In 2021, a group of citizens paid for an appraisal of this particular fifty-nine acres of Sleepy Hollow, we felt it was a needness. The assessed valuation by DQ Real Estate Evaluation Services of Pittsburgh came back at one million fifteen thousand. Working with the county and local land trust, our goal would be to render the landowner a fair price for his land, but then to preserve that land for future generations. On March fourteenth meeting of the Friends of South Park, we passed the following motion. We recommend that the South Park Township Planning Commission reject requests to rezon Sleepy Hollow property from R2 to R4 due to negative effects this development will have as a result of its close proximity to the park. In addition to adversely affecting the natural beauty of the park and the surrounding forests, such development and resulting population increase could also create potential problems for park operations, including excessive littering, possible vandalism given that the park is open until midnight. So, we request that you deny the zoning request from R2 to R4. And just one more thing, a personal request from the big guy, the guy is the buffalo that is responsible for twenty of the baby buffaloes that were in South Park, and he asked, "Please don't do it, because it's getting interfere with your property."
Evening. My name is Clay Fulden, 2005, Alverd Drive, South Park. Been resident here for thirteen years. And I know you guys have all been getting beat up and, and a long night, so three very short points, and I promise, be out of here. And I'm gonna take a little different take on what everybody else has been doing. The first, Ms. Jaigle, I know it was a boring, tedious job. Thanks for putting that all out there the way you did. But one thing I do wanna ask everybody here in reconsideration of this, in keeping it R2, is write your career with the democratic process. You're here to represent us, the residents of the township. The consultants we have here are here to be an objective voice, to keep developers from coming in and just taking everything over and from us not being welcoming neighbors and welcoming people in. We need to control our growth. And the one thing that's the job that we, we ask you to do is just keep a, you know, keep the hands on the wheel for this, so it doesn't get out of hand and off the rails. But when we count votes for people, when we vote for president or board supervisors or anything, we count the people that are present, people that came out and cast a vote, not the people that, you know, there's how many thousands of people didn't show up today. We care about our township, we care about the quality of life. And we come out and we're asking you, we, we're asking you to represent those that come out, just like when the votes are counted, those are the people that are elected. Eighty percent of the people don't vote, they obviously don't care. They could go either way. But the twenty percent that do, do care. So, we're just asking that consideration of you. And I know it's been, I know it's been a very long night, I do appreciate all of you actually looking and paying attention and being very attentive to this. The other thing I wanna bring up is the console site. If you look at that site and look at the wall of townhomes, it's not exactly aestheticically pleasing. Down there, it's okay, it's kind of out of the way, they did a nice job. But in this area, next to the park, when you're going through, walking the park, seeing that, I don't, that's something that none of us really care to see, and there's a point where it's just too much. It's just too much. And then finally, and the other last point is, and I know to the developer, you're coming in here in an adversarial position. I give you credit for coming in because you gotta take, you gotta take the blows. But a couple of comments that you made, if we wanna be welcoming, if you wanna have welcoming, happy, made people to welcome you in, the comments that were made saying that you don't represent the people from South Park, you represent the outside interest, and this is kind of coming in here trying to put a square peg in a round hole, doesn't make us warm up to, doesn't make us warm up to you. And I think that's something that, you know, if you come in, you're gonna look for things, there's gonna be change orders, there's gonna be things that happen, there's, projects that'll move. And if things are gonna go through during the project, where you're gonna need our help, and we're gonna make requests to you. Having that relationship is very important for, for the success of any project. But coming in with, you know, the out-of-time developer banging the fist, and we're gonna do this, and then saying that I don't represent you, that really, really, would everybody off, everybody off this way. And that, you probably had ten percent, maybe they might have sided with you, but that, I don't think, maybe not here tonight, but there might be ten percent somewhere. I'm trying to be fair. But you definitely locked everybody, locked everybody into their position, right? So, I would suggest, you know, in the future, just please rethink that approach. That's not, that's not a good neighbor. And in South Park, when I moved here out of the city, this has been the most welcoming, old-fashioned, old-school neighborhood I've ever been a part of. I grew up in Martinsville, moved the Brookline, and finally came here. And this is home. And we can keep it a nice, welcoming atmosphere for everybody to be, for everybody to be a part of and to, to really just be together, something different than what's going on in the world today. So, I would ask that you reconsider that approach. Sorry to maybe take up too much time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Diana Foster. I'm from 1046 West Chester Road, South Park. I'm here today to speak for the buffalo. My concern is what impact will this proposed development have on the buffalo in South Park? The South Park Buffalo Reserve is very well-known and rather unique to our township and deserves our consideration. South Park has been a caretaker of the buffalo since 1927. Almost a hundred years ago, the first director of Allegheny Parks, Paul Reese, purchased the first eighteen buffalo. They're the centerpiece of the park, and in 2001, the Allegheny County Council adopted a measure to secure the herd's future in South Park. We know the history of the impact of the fireworks on these precious animals. What will the impact of this nearby construction, especially of this magnitude? Yesterday morning, my family had the privilege, we met up with the buffalo's handler, handler, Buffalo Bob Kuzman, who's been the caretaker for the buffalo for more than a decade. And if you know Bob, you know that he loves these beautiful animals. He was proud to share with us that the latest grade by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, this is an annual inspection that he received, it was both based on the health and the facility for a buffalo preserve. The grade was an A+. Bob said, "This proposed development really scares him because he knows it won't be good for the buffalo." He shared a story with us of a car alarm that was going off on one of the groves just above the preserve and says we drive. The sound of the car's alarm sent the buffalo into a panic, and they were running in circles. My family and I were there for about an hour yesterday feeding the buffalo. They really loved apples, potatoes, pumpkins, we had a great time. We had the entire herd in the open fenced area feeding them. And as if by a sign of God, the rattatat sound of a woodpecker on a nearby tree spooked them and sent the entire herd running into the woods. Buffalo Bob said, "You won't get better evidence than that." And so, what's the impact of the nearby construction noise will have on the health and being, well, well-being of these buffalo? The developer was here today showing the population maps. It's not the population, it's the proximity of this development to these, or buffalo that are in this area. As a resident's home, and many residents' homes, it's a sad, it would be a sad story in a black market, South Park, if overdevelopment drives the buffalo away. It's right there for a hundred years. Please, think of the buffalo.
If only they could.
Good job.
Hi, I'm Bob Wall Major. I'm with sixty-seven ten Hilldale Garage Home, a distance from there, but about fifteen acres behind my house. I'm in the Wilson Farm, the town, South Park behind me, Sunny Slopes, the stores, I see wildlife here, it's there. And I've come in with three acres over here, township in there, professional in there for fifty years, registered to say it from the bank. Actually, didn't have any information, I think it's a term of action, what are you gonna do with this property? Another great answer, gave me nothing, it's dead. But I'll, I'll tell you the downside. I worked on one of the first buildings on a summer station, apartment building. You want to go? A box, San's apartment, like that, other development showed nothing on that drawing. But I was given to this plumbing system in that building, nothing. And because they got a mobility grant from the federal government, that's how it was built, I was thinking, you might have had not a lot to say about that because of that. And here, I think she should get, like, put that, put that together like she did. What I would like to say is, stay R2, but propose changing it to a conservation district instead of what you're in there. When I say the Wilson Farm behind me, people come by, I say, "Well, I own it, and it's just part of the properties up there, and everybody likes it."
Yeah, I think, I think our stenographer missed some of your comments toward the applause.
Oh. I was just saying that I live with fifteen acres up there, the Wilson, Wilson Farm, that's where I live, and the Sunny Slopes, a park beside me, and the other thing, once I did summer station, when I moved there almost four years ago, five herds of siren once a day come across, Bronson run it between Maple Springs and Hilldale. Now I hear it every day, sometimes three or four times a day during the weekend, between fire trucks, county police, or the South Park council police. And with summer station down there, you look at what's just built down there, they can come up Bronson, and get a few lights, and get out of there, or go in ADA. And that's they do ADA a few times, they're coming up Bronson. And the people over there on Scults don't need that traffic because they're left, they're down there, even by beer, some from your pool, that's about what you got down at ADA. Not much more down there, so not a whole lot of ground there. That's enough. So, conservation district going the other way, they're not an R4. And if the developer bought, all the people in here, if you already own- And if the developer bought, I'll repeat one here, if you already own-